This guy is hijacking the meeting.
You're incorrect.
Russ the Sus, I'm inviting you to be the Grinch who stole Christmas in Otter Creek. Back at Town Hall in Otter Creek, and we're about to have some fun.
Town Hall's looking incredible. How do you like your new digs?
Looks good. It's less cluttered, more bright.
Is that Santa Claus? That's Santa Claus! That's Doug, Belinda's husband, and he's gonna have the role of playing Santa Claus at Christmas in the Creek this year. The kids are gonna have a blast, but I kinda think Doug's gonna have even more fun than them.
There's Mrs. Claus over there.
There's Mrs. Claus!
She's blushing. You're making her blush.
I am excited. I'm very excited for Christmas in the Creek. There have been people dropping off gifts. It's gonna be incredible.
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six...
He's the official timekeeper.
Five, four...
He's the official timekeeper.
You think John Crook and Lynette are gonna bust through the door when we get to one?
Three, two, Madam Therese, it is time.
Alright, let's call the meeting to order. First thing we have, hey, Gail, is prayer. Is there anybody who would like to volunteer to do the prayer tonight?
I'll pray. You guys don't mind bowing your heads, taking your hats off and praying with me, please? Father, we do humbly come to your throne of grace with an understanding that we need your grace. We thank you for the gift of your grace, and may we bestow that same gift upon others. Fathers, cry out, heal our town. Father, bring hope back where there's hopelessness. We thank you for the leadership that you provided. Father, may we always be respectful of that leadership as they guide and direct us. Father, may we be found faithful following you, and pray this in your precious name. Amen.
Praise the leaders.
...of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God and country can't unify this small little town together. I don't know what can.
Now we'll do the roll call. Russell Meeks Sr., Gail Lynn, Therese Granger present, Sim Pageant, Don Severino. The first thing we have is to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I hear a second to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? No one? Alright, and then we have the bills to look at. Has everyone looked at the bills? Do you have any questions?
Well, these aren't really all the bills. This is just a few of them. It's just the one page, ten or fifteen lines.
At least this month's meeting started a little different. Last month, within the first couple minutes, Russell almost got decked. Now it's just back to the same old, same old Don the Con. And I got a question. How can you say this isn't all the bills if you're saying you're not receiving the bills? How do you know if you're not receiving the bills if it's all the bills? Well, this isn't all the bills. Did Don finally come to Town Hall and receive his packet and somehow know something more about the bills than anybody else?
Were there any other bills that we've received, or is this what we have currently?
We received one for Gator Works for the computer, and we got one today from... I'll have to look at the... And then we had Douglas and Douglas. We got the monthly bill pocket down.
So Don was right. There's three more bills. Except Don was wrong, because Gator Works is for the computer for Belinda. The whole Town Council already voted to go ahead and do that. Alright, number two. Let's jump to number three, actually. You've got Douglas and Douglas. That's the law firm representing them against me. They're the defendant, I'm the plaintiff. They've already voted to move forward and take care of all that. Now let's jump in the middle to number two. A bill that just arrived today. That wouldn't be in the packet that was prepared beforehand. That would be in next month's packet. So yes, they received all the bills.
Actually, it's kind of an incomplete financial report. A real financial report would have the incoming spending for the last thirty days, would have the spending and income for the fiscal year. In addition, it'll have all the checks that are written and the numbers at the registry, a check registry, and it would also have the water plant account in addition to the general fund account, and that's a financial report.
Don's correct about a financial report, but nowhere in the agenda is going over the financial report. The motion on the table is to pay the bills. That's it. The bills. Pay the bills. Not let's review the financial report. It's let's pay the bills. Now, keep in mind, Don is hijacking, and I don't use that term often, but Don's about to later about me. Hijacking yet again this entire meeting with complete and total nonsense.
This is just...
The bills to be paid?
Well, you can't take a decision for this, because here...
This is a list of the bills.
Okay.
We're asking about the bills.
Okay.
And I've been attending these meetings for a little over six years, and none of those reports you just described has ever been listed at any of the meetings that I've been to in the last six years.
Okay.
So obviously, it's not a practice that the town has occurred in the past.
Okay, well, what's this? This is from one of the meetings. I got several of those. See, that's the way it is supposed to be. It's the way it's been done. How are we supposed to understand what's going on with just the list of the bills?
I'm guessing your participation in the process through the month, you can see what's going on.
Pardon?
If you participated as a councilperson for the town, you probably see what's going on. Versus your only participation to the town is show up to the meeting. What other participation did you do?
And?
And I guess we could go on and on, because we already have. You live literally a thirty-second walk away from Town Hall. Madam Mayor Therese has been doing all the work. Vice Mayor Zim has been doing all the work. Other members are doing the work, and you have been voted in by the constituency, by the residents of Otter Creek. You don't show up in complete and total confused and dazed and hallucinating, and the list can go on and on here, right? And you don't know anything because you don't do the job you were voted to do. That's the issue, Don. That's it. You. You are the problem.
So I don't see how anybody can make a decision, you know, pass the financial report with just this. We have to have information. That's what we're supposed to do. How can we have any kind of oversight when we don't have any information?
Do you have a question?
I think that what we're used to is having the balance of everything, okay? So we, like the water, what we did with water and the balance of what was in that account and what was the balance in this account. That's what we were used to.
I don't know if that was the correct way.
I don't know what the correct way is, but I think that's what you're used to.
And that is going to be coming. Palan Jones is helping me finish cleaning up all the old stuff that's out there that needs to come out. We got finished with the twenty-two audits, so now we are just cleaning that up so that we can go forward. And so the report that you see is an actual report of what it is.
In other words, Mary Mary Mathis Scary screwed the books up so bad, wasn't even reconciling the bank accounts, the bank statements, that the CPA firm and Belinda are still in the process of fixing it all. So if Don or anybody else even got a balance sheet, it'd be wrong, because the books are wrong, and they're gonna get the balance sheets when everything is right. You can only make good decisions off of good information.
There's tables in there that shouldn't be. There's deposits in there that shouldn't be. There are duplicates. We have to get those cleaned up so there is a true financial statement.
I have a question.
That has nothing to do with providing a check registry.
We're just talking about bills here.
And financial reports. You know, you usually skip the financial reports and do the bills. You know, it's supposed to be the financial reports, and then we'll approve that, vote on that.
I don't see that in any of the minutes. So, I mean, however you guys want to go forward with it, that's up to you.
I'll check with the other towns and see what they do going forward.
Well, I've given you an example.
But I will make a motion to pay the bills.
Okay, but before we do that, I have a question about the bills. I'd like to know what this seventy-five hundred dollars for the ARPA is.
Here's about what's to go down. The accounting firm came in for the audit. They found seventy-five hundred dollars wrongfully misplaced. What is it? Where is it? Well, here's what happened. Russ the Sus went and took seven thousand five hundred dollars illegally, because nobody knew. Nobody voted on it. That's illegal. As a matter of fact, that's corrupt! And he took it from the wrong accounts, and now those accounts are all screwed up. That's illegal. That's corrupt. That's the conversation you're about to hear.
That is where we are replacing seventy-five hundred dollars. The town of... Well, I can't say the town of Otter Creek. Someone purchased for Panini Engineering to come out and do a survey to write the grant for our broadband. I see no minutes where it was approved. I see no minutes where it was talked about. When I called them, first of all, Palan Jones asked me to, what was it about? I had no clue. I couldn't find anything. Melissa with Fred Fox came to set our boxes up for the grant, set our picks in to take off. She wanted to know what it was for as well. So I finally found out who the check was made to, and I called them. They said this was services to help us to see how the fiber optic was going to lay out for the town, and then we would take that and apply for our fiber optic grant. Okay, so there were purchases that for this engineering firm to... And we were not guaranteed that we were going to get the fiber optic grant.
Do we get that money back?
No, we do not get it back. It was for services, and so we should have, if we were going to do that, since we did that, it does not come out of a grant money. That is needed to come out of operating. So we're taking it out of operating and putting it back into ARPA where it belongs.
So it wasn't voted on or discussed?
For our broadband, but only if it was an active grant. We didn't have a grant at the time that we took this money out of there.
Can't emphasize this enough. Make sure you understand this. Russ the Sus illegally, illegally, corruptly, took seven thousand five hundred dollars illegally, corruptly, from a fund that he cannot legally take it from without any Town Council member's knowledge or any people in the town, and spent the money, and it's gone forever. And now the town has to take the money from the operating expense, from taxes I pay, from the other residents they pay, from water, and they have to take it from the operating expense and replenish the account that he illegally took it from. Who's being penalized for all this? The residents of Otter Creek. Who did it? Russ the Sus.
Therese had asked you.
So it wasn't voted on or discussed at all?
I can't find no meetings. I can't find nothing. I can find where Fred Fox came in and talked about once it was to be, to apply for it. We voted yes, Fred Fox could apply for it with, for us, but nothing was ever mentioned about this purchase.
Did he ever say that this was a requirement?
No, it's not. It wasn't a requirement. It just said, when I spoke to Steve at Panini Engineering, he made the comment that Fred Fox, Russell Meeks, and him had met several times to go over this. There again, I have searched every, I searched numerous years and every month of the meetings, and I didn't see anything that was mentioned about it. So we, basically, we purchased this to help us to apply for the grant.
Throwing money into the wind. Throwing money into the trash. Okay.
What was the date of the check?
The date?
Yeah.
December, December of twenty-one. And I went back and I looked at all the notes. I mean, everything, every year from nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. I see nothing.
And it was made up too?
Panini Engineering. Do you remember talking about this or meeting with them?
Was that in the financial ledgers?
Should be.
Should have been.
They had to do, they had to do an engineering study before they would even give us the grant, and that's what that was for.
Okay, but...
Because they wanted all of these lines underground.
Okay.
And not on a pole. And if you recall, when Mr. Fox was here, he brought that up, that these lines had to be engineered, how they was gonna do it.
For someone who don't do emails, he has a lot of knowledge of underground fiber optics. He's scrambling, trying to cover his butt now, but it's exposed. The world can see it. Say no to plumbers' crack, kids.
Right, but that's part of our grant. That's part of our meeting for grant, not prior to.
And that kind of spending should be voted on.
We had to do that engineering study before they would give us the money, and that we could use that money in that fund to pay for that engineering study.
So was there, so did the council vote on that?
The council voted on it, yes.
I saw nothing in the meetings. No minutes about it, nothing.
There's no minutes? There's no vote registered? There's no...
And nothing was in the ARPA, because the ARPA had never been put in the financials. So no one saw that it came out. So there again, what, okay, so you had a meeting, Town Hall meeting, and it was voted in the public heard?
In a meeting, yes.
One month, because I can't find it in the minutes where you guys approved it.
I can't recall for sure just what month it was.
I can do the check, and Steve Panini sent me the information, but he said that it was not guaranteed that we would get it. It was just to help us get the fiber optic grant, and it is non-refundable.
Did you ask Mr. Fox about it?
I sure did. Mr. Fox said Russell knew about it. That's all he could say. Melissa didn't know anything about it.
Let's see if we can get a little more explanation from him about this, so you all know what's going on with it.
Well, I do know what's going on.
You do know this? This is explanation?
Yes, and it was brought to my attention when first Linda with Palan Jones asked me about it, and then Melissa from Fox Enterprises asked me about it. There was nothing in this office. I had to solve them and get everything.
We did a lot. I can't be specific on that. Last night, I referenced some dates and other things.
But you do agree it should have been voted on, seventy-five hundred dollars?
Well, everyone agrees it should be voted on, yes.
Not everybody.
Alright, that was my only questions about the bills.
So I'll reaffirm my motion to pay the bills.
Alright, do I hear a second to pay the bills? Does anyone want to make a second to pay the bills?
I'll second the motion to pay the bills.
Alright, all in favor?
I would kind of really like to have more information.
Opposed?
It gotta be paid.
Okay, pay the bills. Alright, the next thing is to approve the minutes from the October tenth meeting.
Okay, the problem there is with that is the reason I think we should have our recording back here is there's one, is it an error here? Whenever we voted on the minutes of last line, you have down here that Russell Meeks and Don Severino oppose that. That's not true. That is not true.
Let's have some flashback fun. We're gonna find out exactly how Don and Russ the Sus voted. I'm not saying he's wrong, and I'm not saying he's right. We're gonna find out what the recording of the video says.
Okay, then we have an approval of the minutes from September sixth, twelfth, and eighteenth. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Do I hear a second to approve the minutes?
I second it.
Alright, we have a second to approve the minutes. All in favor to approve the minutes, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Alright, Russell opposed. Motion carried.
Extremely clear that Russell opposed. Now, the camera's right next to Don. Don's got his back to the camera. I think I hear a faint aye in the aspect to approve the minutes. But if there is a recorder, which Don's going off later about, there's gotta be a recorder, that recorder would have recorded nothing. If there wasn't video evidence, nobody would know anything. I think Don is correct in this situation, but Russell definitely opposed the minutes.
Okay, you have to...
No, you're not gonna take my word.
No, I'm just telling you I didn't do the minute, so...
Okay, I understand. That's why I think we should have recording, so you can... Yes, he's right. He's right. Another one, when we were reviewing to pay the bills, you have here opposed Russell Meeks and Don Severino. I voted yes on that. I didn't vote, I didn't oppose it, right here in the meeting, in the packet. It says I opposed it.
I'm asking for the motion to pay the bills.
To approve the agenda, and we did the agenda, now the bills, yes.
I made a motion to pay the bills.
We have a second to pay the bills?
I second to pay the bills.
Alright, we have a second. All in... All in favor to pay the bills?
The packet one, was that one okay?
All in favor to pay the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, no.
Okay. Russell opposed. All the rest in favor. Motion carries.
Yet again, another situation where Don could be correct, but you can't really hear what Don is actually saying. His back is turned. How's Belinda supposed to hear these things if Don himself can't hear anybody else, but then Don's saying, well, we need a tape recording? Well, the tape recording's never gonna hear. There are all kinds of recordings. But again, it is very clear. Russell opposed it.
Hey, here when we were voting on the grant for Mid Tower and Fox, we took a vote. It was unanimous, but here, it has. Opposed Russell Meeks and Don Severino. That just did not happen. We both voted for that.
Instead of taking hours and hours digging through past videos, I'm just gonna give Don the benefit of the doubt. Nobody heard his actual vote. He hasn't spoken up in the previous votes. He might have voted positive, affirmative. That's great. I think there's a lesson to be learned. There are hearing issues here, and a sound system has been donated that Don refuses to use.
And there's, well, yes, that's what I have to say about Don. It's just not, it's not accurate.
Okay.
Not accurate. And minutes are supposed to be accurate. That's the main thing. And I can understand the difficulty that she has trying to remember all this and take to note that. That's why we should have a recorder here, so she can, when she's doing the dictation, she has something to go on other than her memory.
Then, well, since Russell is recording, and he has to give us a copy, we'll get it from him.
Yeah, but see, since he's recording it, since he's recording it personally, he can turn it on and off when he wants. We want one here that is continuous the whole meeting.
Okay, okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Stupid, David. Next.
Okay, so we'll review that and bring that back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Alright. Now we have our special guests from Palan Jones to talk about the findings from the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two audit.
This is a third party that the town of Otter Creek legally has to hire to do an annual audit. Now, I've already done a video on the audit the previous year, and in the meeting, they try and paint this pretty picture, but if you actually get into the audit, it's financial emergency. You lost money. You're losing money. You're losing money. Well, this year, hopefully, is better. We all want that, right? This is the same company that found the seven thousand five hundred dollars misappropriated by Russ the Sus illegally. Let's see what he has to say. I've got questions. I'm sure you do. And I want you to know, I'm gonna do a later video digging into the financial audit.
Where should I stand?
Just right there.
Okay. So I'm gonna go over the financial statements for the year September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. So obviously, this is not, you know, immediately right now, you know, financial statements. It takes a top time for us to go and review them and year end close out and such. So, you know, this was just over a year ago now, in the year that ended on that date. In our independent auditor's report, we said that we've audited the financial statements of the town of Otter Creek for that year, and then in our opinion, the financial statements are accurately presented with... And then it says, well, basis for our opinion is that we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards. Page ten of the report has management's discussion and analysis. This is a brief summary of the financials. If someone wants to read that, it's four pages. It gives a brief summary of what's going on, the financials of the town. On page seventeen of the report is the balance sheet for the governmental fund. It shows that you have cash and investments of two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand for the year. You had liabilities of eleven-thousand, and the net between those two, which is your fund balance, is two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand dollars of net worth. A portion of that is assigned for ARPA of fifty-eight-thousand, and then we have your unassigned balance of one-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, which represents approximately two-point-two months of operating expenditures. So if no money came in, you could operate for about two months without having anything to replenish.
This is an important statistic here. Otter Creek is two months away from being broke. No income comes in whatsoever, and they've got two months of money to pay bills, then they got nothing. That's better than the average American. Most people forecast that the average person is just one or two paychecks away from being completely and totally broke.
On page eighteen of the report, we have our statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. It's like a profit and loss, also for the governmental fund for the year. It shows that your total revenues were one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, and your expenditures for general government were ninety-two-thousand, and public safety were twelve-thousand, bringing total expenditures to one-hundred-and-five-thousand. You also had other financing uses of eight-thousand. Your net change is twenty-five-thousand increase. That brought your net worth from two-hundred-and-thirty-two up to the two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand we previously talked about. On page twenty, we have our statement of net position for your water utility. You have cash of thirty-five-thousand, meter deposits of six-thousand, and then you have your plants and improvements for fixed assets, long-term, one-point-four-million, and the depreciation against those assets, which show how much has been used up over time, of eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand. The net value of those is five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand for the year. Total of all assets is six-hundred-and-seven-thousand. For liabilities, you have your customer deposits of ninety-five-hundred, and the net between those is six-hundred-and-seven-thousand. It's your assets minus your liabilities is your net position or net worth for the year. Five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand is invested or tied up in your assets, so that can't be accessed, whereas you have unrestricted net position, which is funds that can be accessed, of thirty-three-thousand.
Remember that number, thirty-three-thousand? That's liquid money. They can access it. They can do something with it. At the end of twenty-twenty-two, they had thirty-three-thousand. That's what they had. If you were to look at your bank account right now, you'd go, I got this much. That's what Otter Creek had. Now, I'm gonna ask him to emphasize this again, because the residents really need to know what the deal is. Now, he gives me an inflated number that has other assets in it. You understand that the town owns property, owns buildings. There's other phantom numbers, but there are real numbers called depreciation. As things wear down, legally, you can take that out of expense. There's a whole bunch of stuff in there with GAAP principles in accounting, and I'm not gonna do a class on that right now. But what you need to emphasize is, they ended up with thirty-three-thousand dollars.
On page twenty-one, we have the statement of revenues and expenditures. expenditures, and changes in net position for the water utility. It shows that you have your water sales of $30,000 for the year. And your operating expenses were $47,000 for the year. So you had an operating loss of $17,000. I will note that even though you had an operating loss, you did have a cash surplus, which we'll talk about on the statement of cash flows. But the loss is primarily from depreciation. You had $24,000 of depreciation, which is in the non-cash expense. That shows how much your assets are being used up each year. So what this is basically showing is that if you continue on your current trend, you won't be generating enough reserves to be able to replace your infrastructure over time. But you are operating profitably on a cash basis. So if we look at the statement of cash flows on the next page, you had a net increase in cash of $7,000 for the year, which brought your cash balance from $35,000 to $42,000 for the year. Now, like I said, you know, that, some of that may not be an issue running a deficit in that fund if you do have grant funds to help replenish your capital improvements. So if you get grants to like replace your water tower or water lines, that may, it may be a non-issue, but it's always good to have money in reserve for that. Be saving for it. Okay. On page 23, it starts the section of the notes to the financial statements. All those financial statements, you know, they have the numbers. And this kind of explains the why and the accounting policies and procedures and other things behind those numbers. I'm not gonna go into it in detail, but I will hit one of the highlights. On page 33, we have our capital assets note. It shows that in your governmental fund, you have $150,000 of assets, which is primarily buildings. And then you also have some equipment and vehicles. All of those have exceeded their useful lives, so you're being frugal and using what you have. But I just wanted to point out that all those have been fully depreciated out. And then, and for your water utility, you had $1.4 million in assets. And then that $868,000 of depreciation against that, which shows that those assets are 61% depreciated. So that means those assets, about 61% used up based on our estimated useful lives for them. Moving on, we'll go to page 44. This is our report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance as required by government auditing standards. On internal controls over financial reporting, we do have a finding in here. This one is a standard finding that we have for all small governments. You do not have a CPA on staff. It basically says that you don't have staff who are capable of preparing financial statements. But then we also have your response in here, which says that you have a competent bookkeeper who is capable of preparing records. And that it wouldn't be a justifiable expense to pay another CPA to prepare your financial statements outside of the auditor. In the compliance section, we didn't have any other issues there. And then we have our management letter, which is where we lay out any findings or issues that we have during our audit. First section is on our prior year findings. We had two findings from the prior year that we repeated in the current year. The first finding was on bank statement reconciliations not being completed on time and accurately. The second finding was on CDBG grant funds, which were not being reported in a separate and isolated way. And, you know, had that issue, had not been corrected with some of the grant funds. We'd like to see those separated out well. And then next, we have our current year findings. The first one is regarding record-keeping deficiencies. We noted, you know, multiple occasions where amounts were posted to incorrect accounts and not coded correctly. And also, we were several instances where we requested records, and it took a long time to get those because they weren't readily accessible and had to be located. So that's the first finding. The second one is on cutoff procedures. Cutoff is essentially, at year-end, you have to decide what belongs in the year and what doesn't belong in the year. And we noted that there wasn't sufficient cutoff procedures to determine what belonged in the year and what did not. For example, if you paid something in October and your year ended in September, sometimes that payment might have been for services in September. So we would need a listing to know, kind of, hey, this belonged in this year to kind of accurately have our years separated in our financial statements. On our third finding, we have customer utility deposits. We found that the listing that we had for deposits did not match what was in the bank account for those deposits. We recommend that those be reconciled and looked at more carefully to determine what might have caused those variances and what your actual liability is for those utility deposits that you are holding for your customers. And then the rest of this letter, it also goes on to where we do a financial emergency analysis to determine if the town was in a state of financial emergency, which we didn't determine, we didn't see that. But we did also do a financial condition assessment as required by rules of the auditor general. And this is something that we've been tracking for a while, that, you know, the enterprise fund, you know, has been running a loss like I've previously described. You know, obviously, that's not a good condition to be in long-term because you're not gonna set aside enough capital to further fund your, you know, capital improvements in the future outside of having to go get grants. So we continued that analysis to say that, you know, you did have some deteriorating financial conditions there. And that concludes my presentation. Do you guys have any other questions?
Are we gonna receive one of the copies of that? Usually, they come along with a recorder.
I thought, Belinda, were you gonna... Are you gonna... You guys do have electronic copies? You guys can print off copies as many as you'd like?
She gave me a draft, so if you can...
She didn't send it by?
No. She said you guys would... She asked me how many books.
Oh, okay.
So, and that's okay, I can. I just need to make sure you guys... Is it in the share file?
Yeah, I'll make sure that it's in there if it's not already.
Okay, and then I can download it.
Yep.
And I'll go ahead and print the copies. I have the draft in our book, so I mean...
Okay.
Can you get it electronically, Don?
Pardon?
Can you get it electronically? You okay with that?
I can, but that's really handy to review.
I'm just saying that...
I'm just curious if it's forthcoming or not.
That way you can get it right away, is what I'm saying.
I'd like that paper copy. I don't do emails.
Have you been using Powell &amp; Jones for quite a few years? Been pretty happy with it. It seems very, very thorough and, of course, what you do. I was just curious if, in these reports, is there any evidence of corruption or other irregularities that may have occurred?
Are we all watching and at the exact same meeting? I mean, we started with $7,500 that was illegally corruptly used and moved. We have incorrect bank statements. I wrote down, as he was talking. We have incomplete records. We have bank accounts that don't match. We have literally accounts that don't match. The information is incorrect. We have grant money that's been used inappropriately. I mean, we could just keep going on. I mean, my post-it note was only that big. Are we not in the same meeting? Don, the man is corrupt. It was Russ the Suss and Mary Mary Mathis Scary that was involved in all of this in 2022. I get it. Nobody wants to be in the middle of a town altercation. And Otter Creek is known for some altercations. So an outsider is gonna try and smooth things over. It's not as bad as it looks. No, it's most likely even worse. And I follow up with questions, which then Don says I hijacked the entire meeting. Apparently, Don has also said he doesn't represent me on the board, even though I'm a resident. I find that odd.
Yeah, so here's what I'd say about that. Our job as the auditors is to determine whether the financial statements are accurately presented. We're not necessarily required to catch every instance of fraud. You know, fraud that does amount to, you know, you know, significant or substantial fraud, you know, that meets our levels of materiality, you know. That's something that we would disclose to you. You know, we didn't, we didn't find any in our audit report for this year. But, you know, if something did come to light, we would let you know. We'd be required to let you know if we found something that was obvious.
Thank you.
But, you know, obviously, you know, from the findings, you can see that, you know, there is some issues with record-keeping and some other things in which, you know, there is the potential that smaller stuff, you know, could have happened. But we're not unnecessarily required to catch the little litty bitty stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Anybody else have any questions in the audience about that?
Can you clarify the process this year versus the previous year working with the administration? Because you did work with a new administration for this year, but this year wasn't under that new administration. That was the previous administration, to clarify that.
Yeah.
Was this process smoother? Was it the same? Was it more difficult?
So what I'd say is that, you know, a part of that, you seen that record-keeping finding that is a new finding this year. I think that kind of sums it up. You know, there was definitely difficulties in obtaining some records and some issues with that. You know, maybe things weren't, you know, like we ran into, some stuff wasn't properly posted that had to be kind of cleaned up after the fact. So, you know, in that regard, you know, I guess you could say that there were some more difficulties. But we hope that that's just, you know, a transitional issue.
And the follow-up off of what Don asked you about corruption, would you agree or disagree? There's many ways to sneak corruption in an audit process. If you're given incorrect data, you are only basing everything based on the data that you receive. And you can't... There's a lot of ways to actually make that look clean, even if it's not.
Well, you could say that, you know, nobody's ever, you know, I guess... Let me think about how to say this.
You work with the information that you receive. If you receive faulty information, you take that as this is correct information, and you work with that information.
We're required to keep a level of skepticism with what we do and that professional skepticism is what that's called. So if we do see things that seem out of place, you know, we inquire about it and we try to figure out what's going on. You know, there's, you know, like, you know, there is a certain level, like I was talking about with materiality, you know, like... Yeah, there's thresholds, you know. So, you know, if there's something that, you know, small that came... I mean, if we saw something that came up, we would still bring it up. You know, hey, what happened with this? But, you know, we can't, you know... Our job is not to, you know, to determine every little litty bitty thing. But, you know, there is some, you know, you do, I do get what I'm given. And there's only so much you can do with what you're given, you know. And, you know, but we think we still were able to provide, you know, at least assurance on our material, within a material level for this year's audit that there was nothing out of the ordinary. Like I said, but there could be some small things in there that happened. And there's also, you know, there's certain things that, you know, it's impossible for us to catch. You know, if you had intense collusion and things like that, you know, there's multiple people working together. There are certain limits to what we are able to do.
And your professional opinion, which I think we all appreciate, without, you know, we're throwing big numbers around, you know, $500,000, $1.4 million, things along those lines. Can you get down to the nitty-gritty and say, hey, this is the liquid cash that the town has so that the residents of the town know, hey, this is liquid cash that we have? We're not talking about assets of, you know, buildings and land. Liquid cash that we can operate with is...
Oh, yeah, okay.
You mentioned it once.
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously over a year old at this point, so I can't tell you.
At that point, our liquid cash was...
At that point, your liquid cash...
There's a water here. This guy's hijacking the meeting.
He's asking questions regarding the audit of the town.
Well, I think that's our job, and not the problem.
So the town has... No right to know what's going on.
I'm just venue here.
You're incorrect. Carry on.
So Don hijacks meetings, makes them go for hours upon hours. Sometimes, I think we almost had one go for three hours because Don can't remember. Don needs this, Don needed that. Don, 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 con, 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 con. Who's the hijacker here? I just wanna know, how much money does the town have? I know what you're thinking. Jeremy, you're in a lawsuit. That's how much you're gonna sue for. No, I want the residents to understand the financial aspect of where the town is.
Okay, so for the governmental fund, which is like your normal governmental-type operations does not include your water utility, your total cash and investments were $269,000. And for the water utility, you have... You had $42,000, but $6,000 of that was separated out for meter deposits.
That actually isn't the answer. He gave the answer earlier. I just want it clarified. Bottom shelf cookies for everybody. We can go, it's $33,000. I understand, there's some tension right now, so it's a little nerve-wracking. Let me show you again. He's already said it once. It is $33,000.
Whereas you have unrestricted net position, which is funds that can be accessed, of $33,000.
One last question. I know Don thinks I'm hijacking, I apologize. Just so, as a resident of Otter Creek, even if I'm not acknowledged by a council member as a resident of Otter Creek, just with all the depreciation, and let's say we have no grants, your professional opinion, how long can we last? The rate that we're going, based on that audit, how long can we last? No more grants. You know, grants are a wish and a hope. How can we last?
I mean, that's something that's really hard to say, you know. You would really need to have a study of your infrastructure to know, hey, how... Because like, I'm not an engineer to go out and say, hey, this water plant has this exact many years left or this pipe underground, you know. I'm just putting in, based on what estimated useful lives are, you know, we say, hey, infrastructure, most of the time, is gonna last about 40 years. You might get 60, you might get 80. But without a study or to, you know, there's someone who's got experience looking at it and say, hey, this is how much this or that has. You know, this is how much more we got to go. But, you know, like I said, you're about 60% depreciated on the infrastructure for your water utility. So, you know, as that, you know, in the next 20 years, you know, that's gonna really be aging it out, you know. And so, you know, that could be an issue along that timeframe.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I got one quick summary question. So that's the '21 audit. '22 audit. So the next audit's coming out when? Aren't there like two back-to-back, because this one's late?
So this one was a little later than what it should have been. You know, ideally, we try to shoot for having them out by June 30th, which is when the state requests that it be out.[1604.14] state requests that it be out. So that would be by June 30th of 2024.
For the 23rd.
For the 23rd.
So with that audit, we should be able to compare these numbers to those numbers to see the transitional change and improvements.
Yeah.
That'll be fun to watch.
Anything else? All right, well, we really appreciate you coming out and explaining that to us. You did a good job of explaining it.
Yep. And we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, try and save.
You think you met Lynette and Crook out there? Hey, just so everybody is aware, we actually had armed security. Yeah, we had armed security out there, watching our vehicles outside of the entire meeting. There was also protection inside the meeting. I know people are worrying. You'll find out if they actually showed or not.
All right, now we're moving on to the public participation. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak to the council on any one topic. If you filled out the comment card, if you haven't filled out a comment card but you would like to make a comment, please do so now, and your topic does need to pertain to the town, and we would love it if you would be respectful with no foul language, preferably. Does anybody have...
Hey, I think it's time that Russ the Suss actually uses all that badness for good. I'm gonna take this opportunity to invite him to the Christmas in the Creek party. Sounds like we're actually getting ready for it right now.
Did you fill one out?
No, I didn't.
All right, come on down and fill one out.
I'm always late.
Oh, right here and on the clipboard. There are worst problems to have. All right, so our first person is Ms. Darlene Smith.
All right, I wanted to talk about the Christmas party. We're bringing our Christmas party back to Otter Creek, and...
Yeah!
And thanks to Jeremy and George there...
Thanks to Darlene and Joyce.
...letting us have it at the old school. And we want to try to bring Otter Creek back in, so we're planning on having a house decorating contest, maybe, if everybody wants to participate. You can win some money. I mean, it's, we're gonna give a prize for it, if everybody wants to decorate or anything like that. Yeah, we'd love for everybody to participate that can, and...
Wanting to light up Otter Creek?
To light up Otter Creek. I mean, we look forward to it to be a big thing. There's a lot of people gonna be here, and I know there're gonna be people riding around through Otter Creek, I'm assuming, you know? And I thought it would be nice to, for everybody to participate, or people that will, you know, just decorate and, you know, see Otter Creek come together on something. You know, hopefully.
Do you need to make a comment directly to the council table?
Well, yeah, that's what I mean, I'm direct to y'all, and I mean, if, I know Otter Creek has a funding, you know, I don't know if they wanna participate, you know, help out or whatever, you know, that's...
Do you use the FIDF or are you still gonna do that, like? I would like, I...
I mean, we can do that for the prize, you know, for decorating, if somebody wanted to, then whatever, you know, huh?
That has been the past.
That has been the past.
I think that should definitely continue.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, I don't know how much decorations left around here, or if there is any left, or... I know we had quite a bit at one time, you know?
24.
You know, we could...
Richard said there's a whole bunch.
In the building next door now. I've never been in that building, so I don't know what...
I don't know what condition it's in. We'll have to look through it.
Might as well come over and...
Of course, you can come.
Take a look at it and see if there's anything we can use to help.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. All right. Our next person is Mr. Hales.
It's unfortunate, but Town Hall has to keep a copy of the Civil Protection Orders on Lynette and John Crook.
One housekeeping thing, I just have to publicly give these to the Town Hall. All you have to do is have those on file, and where a normal town would be responsible for enforcement, since our town doesn't have enforcement, Levy County Sheriff is enforcing with the state of Florida. All you have to do, since I'm a resident here, is hold them on file in the office. But what I do want to talk about is tie-off of Darlene. Christmas in the Creek is coming back. I am excited. I've been talking with Darlene and Joyce, and they've gotten me excited, and it seems as if the entire world is excited to see Christmas come back to Otter Creek. I can't tell you how overwhelmed I am already. I got a mountain of gifts already for kids, for Otter Creek and all of Levy County. We're not gonna, just so everybody knows, December 16th, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, we have no idea who's gonna show up or how many people are gonna show up. If it goes longer than 7:00 PM, then we're gonna go longer than 7:00 PM. But we wanted to let the community know and have you guys share that with them as well. There are gonna be free gifts. I had two couples already today drop off brand-new bicycles. It's just overwhelming to me, opening up all these gifts. And then we're gonna need some other help as well, volunteers. We've got volunteers to help with Mrs. Claus, which is gonna be Belinda, and then Mr. Claus, Sandy himself, is gonna be Doug, and we're excited about that. They, it's gonna be incredible as Otter Creek does all of this, but I want to let you guys know that, and we're also gonna need help. We are buying out an entire store of toys for these kids. So I need kind of an army to kind of help me go cart it, haul it, prep it, and get it ready. And so if anybody is interested in the community or the council, please let us know. And then one more thing, we got one more spot we need to volunteer. Since Russ the Suss stole Christmas last year, we need a Grinch! And so Russ the Suss, I'm inviting you to be the Grinch who stole Christmas in Otter Creek. If you want to respond to Christmas in the Creek, you can send gifts for the kids, any age, any gender, to our PO Box in Otter Creek, only during this time while we're in Otter Creek. It's PO Box 78, Otter Creek, Florida, 32683. Again, PO Box 78, Otter Creek, Florida, 32683. This is gonna be one of the best Christmases ever.